Leading the City of Texas, one state, under that, one individual.
Oh, thank you very much. And Mr. Givens, thank you, sir. You always pull us out of a jam. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Ms. Waskey, do we have any assistance, comments?
No, Judge.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on May 21, 2019. Were there any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Bearing none, Judge, I move we accept the minutes as presented for the Commissioners Court regular session of May the 21, 2019.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number two, consider and take action to purchase a monitor for JP4 in the amount of $185 for the Justice of the Peace Technology Fund. Ms. Lee?
All they requested.
Gentlemen, you can see in the backup what they've requested, what's being proposed. Questions or comments?
Never had this much backup when they want to buy paper. Sorry, Judge, couldn't help myself on that comment.
Entertained a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner Thomas to approve the request of JP4 to purchase a monitor for $185 from the Justice of the Peace Technology Fund. All those in favor? Item passes. Item three, consider and take action to appoint an additional member to the Insurance Committee. Ms. Lee?
Yeah, we, since we now have Haley in our midst, she's going to be an important part, especially in the health insurance side, it might be a good opportunity to grow the committee a little bit in the after.
Comments, questions?
Who's on that committee, Anne Marie?
Myself, Clint Davis, Commissioner McCam, Commissioner Gisland, and my department.
Okay. Thank you.
Will you be on it?
No. But thank you.
He just wants to make sure his insurance is paid.
That's right. Further questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Judge. We'll appoint Haley Beaver to the Insurance Committee.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the appointment of our HR Director, Ms. Haley Beaver, to the Insurance Committee. All those in favor? Item passes. Item four, consider and take action on approving an out-of-state travel request for the purpose of obtaining Certified Elections Registration Administrator, Certified Elections Registration Vendor, and Certified Elections Monitor certifications for our Elections Administrator. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
Explain, please, ma'am.
Okay. For the last three years, you've allowed me to take national certification classes in Houston, and now it's graduation time. Graduation is in Florida. Not that it's going to be a vacation, I'm there for graduation only. So, everything involved in this actual trip is reimbursable by the Secretary of State or Chapter 19 thing. And so, it's at no cost to the county, actually. But this would be my graduation for a national certification with the Election Center.
Questions for Ms. Hernandez?
Who's this through, what college?
It's Auburn University.
Auburn's in Alabama?
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. Commissioner Thule?
I have no questions.
Commissioner McCam?
I'd just like to say congratulations.
Thank you.
Be.
Commissioner Diesel?
So would I. Congratulations. I know you've put a lot of work into it, a lot of hours. I am concerned that they're holding it in a state that always has questionable election results. I would have rathered you were going to Missouri or somewhere, but, you know, that's the breaks, I suppose.
It's just where the conference is located, then.
I understand.
I assure you.
Any further comments?
Which option are you wanting to go with?
I think she put three options on there. I'm fine with the one that's 1900. That would be the flight over there and taxi.
To the cab?
Mm-hmm. To the hotel. I'm fine with that.
Makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Probably the higher agency has a shuttle bus anyway.
You know, and I was going to call yesterday, but I was involved in other things, and so I didn't have time. But if they do, you know, I wouldn't have a problem with that, yeah.
And again...
Congratulations.
For everyone, this is completely reimbursable through Chapter 19, being paid for through the state?
Yes, sir. And if it's approved today, I'll go ahead and put in that request with the state. We should get that payment within seven to 10 days. So, way before I even go on the track, we'll have the money.
Any further comments or questions? Entertained a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the outer-state travel in option one in the amount of $1,977.
Which is reimbursable.
Which is reimbursable through Chapter 19 funds. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much. Item five, consider and take action to approve participation of the Clint W. Markson Memorial Library in the Interlibrary Loan Lending Reimbursement Program managed by the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. And with us, we have Ms. Zunor to present to us.
Good morning. Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about the Interlibrary Loan Reimbursement Program. This is a non-competitive grant program. For every book our library loans to another library in the state of Texas, we can be compensated non-dollars. This will not get us a lot of money. We're on pace to get maybe $300, but the only way to get the money is an electronic transfer. That requires the judge's signature, and that's why I'm here at the court today.
Questions for Mrs. Zunor? Have, I believe we've participated in this program before, haven't we?
I don't think so.
No, sir. This is the first time. Austin is excited to have us with them. We couldn't, we weren't eligible before we were accredited.
Right, right. Okay, fantastic. Once again, any questions, comments?
So, the electronic transfer?
It's going to go in the general fund, and then the money will be moved over to the postage, which is really why they do this. They want to help us pay for the books that we mail to the other libraries. So, they don't want money to ever be a reason why libraries don't share resources.
Oh, okay.
And that's all been set up with the Treasurer's Office and your...
We'll take care of that when it starts going, please.
Not a big deal.
Any further comments?
I just noticed the dates were 18, and she said that was a mistake that they made through the state.
Yeah, the reimbursement is the books shared from September of ours 2018 to July 31, 2019.
I got you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
No further questions?
Entertained a motion.
So moved to approve.
With judge's authorization?
With judge's authorization assigned.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the participation in the Interlibrary Loan Lending Reimbursement Program with the judge's authorization assigned. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Ms. Zunor.
Thank you.
We're going to skip over item six, which is a public hearing that we can't hold for another eight minutes, and move on to item eight, which is consider and take action to enter into an agreement, should say with Immigration and Customs Enforcement for inmate housing at the Henderson County Jail. Sheriff?
Sir, good morning, Court. This is, we've been working with Immigration and Customs Enforcement for several years now, trying to get this contract in order. They sent it to us last month, and the per diem rate is, they will be paying is $62.87 per day, per inmate that's in our custody. It will basically be a temporary housing facility for ICE. They have requested to basically have about 10 beds in the facility available to them at all times. We've got plenty of room. And then they, if everything goes well, they want it to, want this, the bed space to grow. There's really nothing new that we will have to do. We already fall under the Texas Commission on Jail standards. The only thing that will be new to us is we will be inspected by the government, the federal government. But they have already, ICE has been in our facility six or seven times, toured the facility, looked at everything, looked over everything. We should have no issues at all. I'm excited to be able to do this with the court's approval, and I think it's going to be a good thing.
Questions for the sheriff?
So, will our jailers have to be certified ICE, or will ICE have people here to watch those inmates?
No, we'll watch them just like we do Rockwall and Vazant County. There's no more, there's no more other qualifications. Just have to get the contract approved, and we'll house them until they, they'll come to us, and then they'll leave us and go to Dallas.
Is there an average number of days that they usually stay?
It's probably going to be, they're requesting 10 open beds, but the inmate themselves will probably only be in custody about three days at a time for 72 hours.
In Henderson County?
Yes, sir.
And when we grow, you said there's some growth. Do you have an idea how much inmates grow to?
They didn't, they didn't say.
20 beds, 30?
What they really wanted us to do, and we wanted to try to get a working relationship with everybody, what they've proposed is they want us to be the transportation hub for East Texas. But I'd feel more comfortable doing this and getting a working relationship before we entered into that big agreement.
Got you.
When they want us to hold 10 beds for them, is there any payment? I couldn't find it in the contract.
No, sir, but I do believe that they'll have, I believe they're going to use their space by just talking with them. They're excited also to, because right now, you know, we have four ICE agents that office here in Henderson County now. And right now, they're having to, if they pick someone up, they've got to drive that individual to Dallas and then come back. And they do that on a regular basis. So, now they'll be able to drop them off here, and their folks from Dallas or Transportation will come and pick them up. So, it's going to save them a lot more time. They'll be able to do more work here in this district.
Will we be the first, basically, in our region, East Texas, Northeast Texas, that has an ICE facility, other than Dallas?
I do not, I believe so. I believe so too. There's other federal inmates, but they're in connecting counties, but they're usually marshal inmates.
Right.
I don't know of any other connecting contiguous counties that have ICE inmates.
I'm sure before they came, the first time, they went to jail standards and looked at your performance.
Oh, yes, sir.
So, that's probably how you got on the radar in the first place, because of the outstanding performance we've had at the Henderson County Jail under your tutelage.
Well, thank you.
Well, it's quite a coup de foudre for us, I think, to be offered that opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Two questions, Sheriff. Reading over the contract, this appears to also so that if the day comes that we do begin to help transporting, it appears that that is already in the contract?
Yes, sir. They've got all the numbers that they need from us. All they'll have to do is do some updating.
Okay.
Which, if that did come, that money would be supplied in the contract for reimbursement, because that's going to take extra personnel.
Right. And it would just, what it would do is it would clear the path so that all we would have to do is implement. There would be no more contract negotiations or all that. So, that covers both the housing and future transport if we so choose to go that route.
Yes, sir.
The second one is, and it's minor, but yet some might find it interesting, it alludes to the fact that there's a possibility every now and then for a juvenile to be picked up. Has any of that been discussed because of the limitations on what you can do with a, someone under the age of 18?
We're not going to allow to house juveniles.
Just flat-nugget allow?
Yes. Because of the state regulations, I'm not going to get us in, not even going to go down that route.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Well, this has been the culmination of about three years' worth of work, if I remember correctly. And a lot of it is, as the Commissioner was saying, is based upon the business practices within the jail, on the check-in, the actual monitoring, and the backup to the actual seeing of the inmates. And the Sheriff's Department and all of his staff is truly to be commended for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the court? If not, we will entertain a motion with the sheriff's authorization to sign.
So moved.
Second is motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Gisland, to approve the contract with Immigrations and Customs Enforcement for inmate housing at the Henderson County Jail with the sheriff's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, consider and take action to accept the annual financial report for the year ending September 30, 2018, for Emergency Service District 11, located in Precincts 1 and 4. Commissioner Thomas, I believe you requested this to be on the agenda, so...
Yes, Court. This is ESD 11, which falls into Precinct 1 and Precinct 4. And Commissioner Gisland and I both looked at it, and we think that they're doing an excellent job, actually, at ESD 11. And their financial report is, is good, and it's done by our audit office, and they look like they're doing a really good job.
Commissioner Gisland?
I concur.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Entertained a motion.
If there's not any questions, Judge, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the annual financial report for the year ending September 30, 2018, for ESD, Emergency Service District Number 11, located in Precincts 1 and 4.
Second is motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Gisland, to accept the annual financial report ending September 30, 2018, for Emergency Service District Number 11. All those in favor? Item passes. Now that we're within our window of time, we will move back to item six, which is a public hearing at 9:20 a.m. It is now 9:21. We'll entertain a motion to move into public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second is motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Gisland, to move into public hearing. All those in favor? Item passes. At this point in time, anyone that wishes to speak in regards to setting a public, to discuss the determination of speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 3817, located in Precinct 3, please step forward and speak your mind. Yes, ma'am. If you would, come forward and give your name and address, if you would, for the record.
Shelley Berry, 9856 County Road 3817, Athens, Texas.
Thank you, ma'am. Please proceed.
I was the one who got the petition, the original petition for this, because we've got a major problem on that road. I don't know how we'll enforce it even with the 35 miles an hour. I'd ask for that, and children at play, maybe, because I've got grandchildren that walk from their house to mine, and, you know, I just think that would, it'll help us a lot, I think. I don't know, I know we can't enforce it, but I think it would help and maybe make it a little safer.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against the proposed speed limit? Seeing no one further wishing to speak, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second is motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Gisland, to close public hearing at 9:23. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number seven, consider and take action to set speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 3817, located in Precinct 3. Commissioner McCam?
Yeah, just as you mentioned, 3817, long road cuts through north of Athens, and she's got several names on the list. I think it'd be beneficial to have a 35 mile an hour speed limit on that road.
Any questions for Commissioner McCam?
If there's no questions, I move that we set a 35 mile an hour speed limit on County Road 3817.
Second is motion.
Precinct 3.
I'll second your motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Gisland, to set speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 3817, located in Precinct 3. All those in favor? Oh, yes, sir. Would you have a comment?
There was a comment you made that if we set the speed limit to 35, it may not be enforced. Not true, because once this action takes place, sheriff is right here, he will tell you, he, his deputies will know that that speed limit has been set at 35 mile an hour, and they will try to patrol that and enforce that 35 mile an hour speed limit.
Yes, sir. I just know that they're very busy, I know. But I don't want to help with the whole lot, thank you.
But with no speed limit sign?
Right.
It's probably not going to be enforced now that, I know within Precinct 4, when we set the speed limits, the Sheriff's Department has always been fantastic of starting to patrol those roads, let people know that the speed limit has been set, and they will receive a citation if they're caught speeding on those roads.
Any further comments?
No further comments, Judge.
Thank you. We did have the motion and the second. All those in favor? Item passes. We'll move back down to item number 10, which is receive financial reports. And in your backup and presented today are reports from JP2. And I remind everyone that these are available for viewing after court in the county clerk's office. Item 11, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Ms. Harris?
I do have payroll totals for biweekly number 11.
Questions, comments? Seems a little light.
This is our third paycheck, so there's no insurance in it.
Third paycheck. Third check of the month? Any other comments? Entertained a motion.
So moved to approve payroll distributions for biweekly 11.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve payroll distributions for biweekly number 11. All those in favor? Item passes. No accounts cash sheets?
No cash sheets.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted contracts. Ms. Nicholson?
This morning, the, presenting to you guys the options that we have for the security and fire alarm systems for the county. The current contract that we have expires August 1. So, we can either extend it for an additional year, or we can do an invitation for bid in the effort to try to get all of our fire and alarm services handled by one agency.
Questions for Ms. Nicholson? Gentlemen, what we've discovered in this is that we have begun to pull together all of our buildings, and what we're hoping to do is to do the same thing that we were able to accomplish with the elevator maintenance and things like, where we can get some value, some added value in having them all in one contract. Also, there are a few buildings that are not involved in this particular contract. We're wanting to bring into this contract the inspection on the jail, the vents, so forth, in the kitchen, the vent hoods out at the fairgrounds. Not only that, we have the Elections Building, the Records Building, and we also have the Juvenile Department building. By, my request is that we rebid so that we can pull all of this together instead of moving forward with the extension, because it will bring all of our buildings under one umbrella instead of piecemeal, which is at request at times. It did work better for us to piecemeal, but we just don't believe that, to get the same benefit this time. Sheriff, would you like to speak to the fire inspections at your, at your building?
Yes, sir. I totally agree. I think it's good to bring the savings, you know, coming together, as far as one company using, one company that we're using, where this guy has to do this, and start processing that way. So, we can get away from, we got one more, we have, usually get by, which, counting this up.
All right. Thank you. This contract's up August 1?
Yes, August 1.
August 1, okay.
We have a 30-day cancellation, so we have to notify them that we're not going to extend by July 1.
So, right now, we have several different companies doing our inspections.
Yes, sir.
That have one company do it.
Yes, sir. And there's some leftover issues from changing of companies through the years. Speak specifically over to the, at the library. That one was under Raider, I think, was the name of it.
Yes.
And having all of the codes for that one has not been able to happen, as they have passed from Raider to Champion, and I think there was another one in there this time.
Yeah, and we're having kind of the same issue with Champion, getting all the original codes and master codes and, and all that kind of line back out, so.
Well, it looks like maybe if we could get one company to do it, it might be a lot smoother transition and easier to get that information.
Yes, sir. That was our thoughts as well. Any other comments? Name will entertain a motion, yes, sir?
Yeah, I was waiting.
Oh, sorry.
What about the JP facilities?
Currently, we have fire extinguishers, but we do not have alarm systems for fire or security.
Well, the county owns, at this point, two of those facilities, actually three. We own the Precinct 4, Precinct 3, and Precinct 5. And of course, courthouse for JP1, that's, that's covered. And the only one that we have rented space is Seven Point.
Right.
But I think any owned facility, this should be part of it.
Yes, sir. That is our belief as well. I didn't mention that.
Well, it wasn't mentioned, that's why I didn't want to make, wanted to make sure if we're going out to bid, that those JP locations would be included in the bid.
Yes, sir, they will be. And thank you. I did overlook those.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion to rebid.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner McCam, to rebid our fire and security alarm service with the addition of those added buildings. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Court, and thank you, Ms. Nicholson. Item 13, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits.
Precinct 3.
Yes, I have one in Precinct 3 from Bethel Ash Water Supply. They want to do a road bore under 3715 for water, and it'll be, it's about 100-foot bore from private to private. Bethel Ash always does great. private. Bethel Ash always does a great job and clean, you know, make sure they get everything taken care of when they finish.
Questions for Commissioner McCam? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Get the right-of-way to bore under 3715 for water to Bethel Ash Water Supply.
And you're, you're going to sign it?
Yeah, with the commissioner's authority to sign.
Second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Geislin, to approve the right-of-way request of Bethel Ash Water Supply Corporation for the boring of County Road 3715 with the commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further comments?
Yes, but one more comment. I also have the check. It will be turned into the treasurer's office.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 14, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Lee?
I have two of those today. First, I'd like to discuss the position budget amendment for the juvenile probation office. See, Blue's back there, but just, just hope that this one position is more marketable, I think, right?
Blue, would you like to come forward and speak and address the court? And as you, if you would introduce yourself.
My name's Blue Nicholson. I'm the recently appointed chief juvenile probation officer as of May 1st. Been with the county for 12 years as a juvenile probation officer. In the last nine months, we've lost over 50 years of experience in our department with the retirement of Bonnie Turnage and Joe Ed Young. Recently hired two brand-new officers that have no experience, so they're being compensated on the minimum salary for the position, trying to hire an assistant chief that has some experience to bring more experience to the department. And during the interview process, I'm finding that the salary budgeted for that position is quite a bit lower than what most assistant chiefs are being paid in local counties in East Texas. So basically, what I'm requesting is that we move some funds from those other positions into the assistant chief positions, so that assistant chief can be fairly compensated, like the other counties nearby.
All right. Questions for Mr. Nicholson? This is a transfer within the budget. This is no new money.
Yes, this is not adding any new money. This is just a transfer within the budget, yes.
So it still isn't going to be a salary equal to the retiring person, because the retiring person had the full amount of longevity already added to that, that salary base. So you're still under that, so therefore, the person retired. We're not bringing someone in being paid more than they were being paid as they retired. That is correct.
Yeah. I do believe that is correct.
That is correct. And that's, that's a good thing. I just thought the court needed to recognize that.
Agreed. It is an actual, still realizing a savings. Any further questions? We'll take this in two pieces. We'll go ahead and take action on this one, because this is a position budget amendment. And if there's no further comments, we'll entertain a motion.
I had, I had one other question. How many individuals have you interviewed?
I've interviewed three.
Three?
Yes.
And they all have the same sort of roadblock that?
Yes.
Any further comments? Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the position budget amendment, all those for juvenile probation. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Ms. Nicholson. Ms. Lee?
And the second sentence, just your general budget amendments, issues with some air conditioning
This gentleman, on the issues with the two facilities listed, that's continuing to stem the tide of our air conditioning replacements. We've replaced six, not counting the courthouse?
I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, just in the last three months. But when you take a head count, we have quite a few air conditioning units in this county. There's 30-something in the jail alone, I Any other questions concerning the budget amendments? Entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Court. Item 15, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, Court, this morning, I need approval on bills in the amount of $325,238.43.
Commissioner Thomas, any questions?
She answered my questions before court, Judge.
Thank you. Commissioner Thule?
None.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Geislin?
I had a couple. Sheriff, Empire Paper, is that the vendor we've been using for prisoner supplies in the past, or is this a new vendor? Empire Paper Company? So it's a special type of paper we use in that application rather than what's used everywhere else? Isn't it in the restrooms?
It's a, it's a, we're having issues with our old company that's a private toilet paper, and so we started using this new vendor, and I believe they make vendors a little cheaper, too.
Okay. I, it just kind of jumped out. I hadn't noticed that vendor before. Emery, outside auditor. And looking at other counties, there's about three outside auditors that counties use, the one we use, and those couple other vendors. Are we getting the best price out of those?
Oh, definitely.
Are we?
Definitely.
Okay. I just knew.
The audits are extremely expensive.
I know.
The survey costs.
Yeah. But there's no way that I could determine how much the cost was on other counties?
I did a survey. I also did a survey that did about a month ago.
Oh, okay. So, okay. Well, we've been with them for a long time, and, you know, I just wanted to make sure they, they weren't hitting us harder than was necessary. I had another question, Judge.
Just want to make a comment and point out to the court, since we are getting close to budget again, our court-appointed attorneys are, are being stretched once again. It's a trend that's going to continue. I do know that the judges are making efforts to try to assist with the current backlog that we have on attorneys. So I don't know that it will help the price any, but it will continue moving forward. We're having such a surge in the demand in very difficult cases that it's straining the system all the way around. I wanted to bring that to the court's attention, that we will continue to have monetary concerns in the area of court-appointed attorneys on all classifications. But the judges are trying to work to keep it moving forward. So with that, I have no other comments. Any other comments from the court?
No.
Entertain a motion on the bills.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the bills as presented. All those in favor? Commissioner Thomas, did you vote in favor, sir?
I did.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Item 16, consider and take action on submitted plats.
We have one in Precinct 2 and all these ways.
Okay. Commissioner Thule?
Uh, this is three lots in the Pinnacle Club, Lot 201, 202, and 203 on St. Andrews Drive, combining those three lots into one lot, 2,000, or, excuse me, Lot 201R, and it takes it up to about a little over 3/4 of an acre. And I've talked with, I think his name is Joey, at Hardin Surveying, and everything meets our requirements, and all fees are paid.
Questions for Commissioner Thule?
He said you were combining two lots, three lots.
Three to one. I may have said two, but it is three to one.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Entertain a motion for filing purposes only.
Do you need authorization? I make a motion that we approve the plat in the Pinnacle Club, Phase 1, Section B, to replat lots 201, 202, 203 to Lot 201R.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the final replat of Lot 20, of 201R in Pinnacle Club, for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes. Do we have the bills?
I do have them right here.
Oh, sorry.
Coming your what, bud?
Item 17, open and consider bids. Ms. Nicholson?
Yes, sir. I have one bid this morning. At the beginning of April, we sent out a request for invitations for bid for a roofing project to repair the rest of the roof on this building and the Records Building. We set a pre-proposal meeting at the end of April. We had one, two representatives show. One was an actual construction company, the second person who attended was the manufacturer for the product that they utilized. After that, we sent out a request for proposals, and that one company was the one company that replied. The main office for insulated roofing is out of Indiana. The two gentlemen that attended the meeting are actually out of Kentucky. And we've received the bids for the Annex and the Records Building. The amounts that were proposed are less than what we had originally thought that they would be, so that what came as a blessing for us.
Any, any questions for Ms. Nicholson? I would add to this. We budgeted $200,000 for this. This force is coming in roughly 150-plus. We have that remaining money that I would ask the court to consider. We still have a few more roofing issues, that since we did not expend it all on these two, believe the JP 5 building is in, is the next candidate with the most issues. And I would like to have the court's permission to move forward using that remaining money that was designated for roof repair in that area. Of course, it will have to be bid.
Judge, there was a removal charge in there that's extra?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to do that?
No. What it is, is right along the side of this building, right here, it's, it's multi-level. There are a set of drains that are right off the edge.
Holding water?
Yes, right there, around those drains that will need to be torn out and re-leveled in. And that's the only areas that are going to be removed on. It's a very small an area. There's, I think, five drains, and it'd be about four to five square feet for each drain.
I got you. That is an extra in the bid?
It is.
We, we can't do that?
No, given, given the specialty of this and how it ties in, rather have the professionals do that, because, because actually, that is the worst area we have for water intrusion into this building. It's very noticeable on the second floor.
So this is, this is going to take care of the Records Building, the old jail, historical society. It's going to take care of the large portion of the Annex, and you think there may be enough money left over that we could do JP 5?
Yes, sir.
So that's, if we go back over the last three and a half years, we've fixed the courthouse, the judicial building, the old jail, the
Old part of the new jail.
Old portion of the new jail, and the lower level of the Annex.
That is correct.
So with these, the only roofs that we haven't touched in the last, let's say, four years is the library, and the new portion of the jail.
And the Elections Office?
Yeah.
And?
But those aren't flat roofs, are they?
Uh, the Elections Office is.
Okay. That's right it is.
No, there are some issues with the juvenile building that are of a different nature that we'll have to address.
But in relationship from a square footage standpoint, we've probably knocked, with this, we've knocked out 80, 85% of the roofs
Yes, sir.
within the county. I just thought it was significant for the public to know how much work we have done to solve leaking roof problems in the last few years.
Yes, sir.
So I think this is great. If there's, you have my total support. If there's enough money left over for us to be able to do the JP 5 building this year, that would be great, because I think it has some pretty bad leaking areas. Isn't that correct, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, exactly. Still, still a problem, but yes.
Well, this particular method that we've been using with the, these, what is the proper term for it? I call it spray foam.
Insulated roofing.
Insulated roofing, has proven itself multiple times for us, not only on its durability, but on, you know, its economic to put in and to maintain. When we do have issues, birds will take notice of a particular area and begin to peck at it, and we have had one or two of those, but maintenance has been able and has been trained on how to take care of those areas and been able to address them. So honestly, when you have a flat roof, it's a matter of time until you get a leak, no matter what it is, wherever water can pond, it's going to come through. But through this process, the maintenance on it is every 10 years, where they remove any excess gravel and reseal, and we're a few years out from our first one that we'll have to maintain. But up till now, once we've had it on, there's been no leaks through that. So, but we, again, we have two actions here to take. One is to award
The Annex and the Records Building proposal, and then approval to go out for bid for JP 5.
Okay. Well, we'll do this in two motions. First one is, ask for a motion on the awarding of the bid for the Annex and the Records Building.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the bids for roofing of the Annex and the old Records Building, be awarded to insulated roofing contractors. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. And our second motion is to go for bid on JP 5 building.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner Thomas, to go for bid on the roofing roofing project for the JP 5 building in Malikoff. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Court. Thank you, Ms. Nicholson. Item 18, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
You two are battling, everybody. Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner McCam to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you so much for being here with us today.